Good afternoon, everyone. The time is now 5:33 and I'm going to call this meeting to order. It's been duly posted as required by state law. And we are going to get started. I thank you all for your patience. We've got a full house. We're going to try to be as efficient as possible with our time. And we're going to get started with our invocation. Commissioner Perez?
Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance and support as we begin this meeting. I pray that we will have a productive meeting today. I pray that we'll be able to discuss and tackle the important things we need to tackle and be efficient in handling them. I also thank you tonight, God, for these servants, our mayor, our city manager, our city staff, and my fellow city commissioners. I give thanks for the service they have chosen to take up on behalf of all of us here. We all come to this room tonight as complex human beings, carrying burdens, carrying joy and hope, trusting that you alone can hold us together in your love and peace. We pray for wisdom, for strength, for courage, to do what is right and good for all citizens. May we put the interests of others above our own and we act with love for the common good. May we be good neighbors recognizing your image in every person here. We thank you again for this commission, our mayor, our city staff, our first responders, our hospital staff, and all those who work to make this place we call home such a wonderful city. In the name of Jesus, whose perfect love sets us all free from fears. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, free, and just as for all.
Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a council member or certain members of that member's family have a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on any agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None here.
I'm going to be abstaining from item 20B.
Nope.
No.
None.
Great. At this time, I do want to take a moment to recognize Christina Garcia. If you could please stand.
Mayor, Christina is our new Director of Media and Communications. She comes to us with a degree from UT Brown School of Communication, so that's perfect for the city. She previously worked for the school district, HCIST, in their Public Relations Department and for the city of Wesaco as a public information officer. Christina, do you want to say a few words?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor, Commission, City Administration, and our audience. I am really excited to be here today. Thank you so much for offering me the position to be the Director of Communications and Media for the city of Harlingen. I am a proud resident of Harlingen, so it's great to live in the community that I serve. And I was really grateful to hear about the city's increased commitment to open government and communication throughout our beautiful city. So I take great pride in what I do. This is what I love. I love local government and communication. It's what I studied and I have previous experience working for another municipality. So I look forward to meeting each of you. I knew who everyone was before I started here, but I don't think you all knew who I was, so I was grateful to meet with you all. I haven't met everyone just yet. I've been meeting all of the directors, of course, the city managers that I just met, and I'm grateful to meet with each of you all. Since I'm a resident, I did know who our mayor and commissioners were, but now I'm grateful to introduce myself to you all and say that I'm definitely committed to the city and to ensuring that we are going to be transparent and also ensuring that, you know, we answer any questions that the public may have and provide them with information about the great things that are happening here. So I look forward to making that happen and I appreciate this opportunity. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on, we will begin with our citizen communication. And ladies?
Yes, ma'am. The first person to speak is Raymond Reyes, and his topic of discussion is efficiency and oversight.
I think I saw Mr. Reyes out in the lobby.
Raymond Reyes, 706 Nantucket Drive, of course, Harlingen, Texas. Basically, I just wanted to come by for my brief two minutes. I had sent out an email in regards to some concerns that came to light. Again, I've stated before that, you know, I'm a citizen of Harlingen, but it's not my job to oversee certain aspects of Harlingen. We've been here so long and I definitely don't have any problem making things of note, of things that are going on that I think should be addressed in some instances, not just with Harlingen and other municipalities. They try to run things as a, AKA a corporation. So I deal with corporate America on a daily basis and I've been doing it for a very long time. So if that's going to be the mindset, then I would keep in mind that if you're going to think like that, then think of the citizens of Harlingen as shareholders, and you guys are the members of the board and stuff. Of course, with any shareholder in any corporation, things are subject to change. The key to anything, whether it's a municipality, county, local, state, federal government, corporation, is to have proper oversight. Make sure you stay informed, make sure you stay on top of things. If you don't know, ask. There's nothing wrong, there's no dumb question. The key is to do the right thing at all times. Things are going to slip through, there's cracks, of course, but as the individuals that are leading Harlingen into the future, there should be, again, oversight of everything that's going on because when something comes to light, one of my pet peeves is, and I believe I let it out in the email, if I only would have known or if only somebody would have said something. Well, I think people do say things and sometimes it's not taken into account because there's just not enough knowledge or, again, oversight of what's going on. And before the matzo ball hits the fan, it should be addressed and stuff. I'll always do my due diligence to work with the city, make them aware of certain scenarios that are going on that I feel should be addressed because nothing's perfect, but as long as it's a work in progress, we can get through it. And basically, that's all I have. Thank you very much for your time and y'all have a good meeting. It looks like it's going to be a long one, but I've got my own stuff to do. So y'all have a good evening. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Just a quick note to the audience and maybe those that are listening online, just want to remind everyone that citizen communication is a time for the community to come and speak and provide any concerns, issues to the commission. You have three minutes to speak and you should state your name and the district or your address. And unfortunately, the commission is unable to answer or engage, not because we don't want to, but those are the rules of the meeting. So just a quick reminder of that. Next, we have Virgil Garcia. Is he present?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Just your name and your address or district, please.
Virgil Garcia, 3905 East Grimes. First time doing this, a little nervous. All right, my name is Virgil Garcia. I'm 38 years old and have been a resident of Harlingen all my life. Thirty-six of those years, I've lived on Grimes. I've loved the area so much, I've actually bought the house next to where I grew up. I grew up right outside the city limits when the city ended at Academy Drive, and there were six houses on that part of Grimes back then. Now there are only seven with small yards and short drives. I currently reside at 3905 East Grimes where I have a small yard, short drive, because in 1993, they expanded the road with from concrete pavers to the current two-lane road. This is when Fire Station Number Eight was built. This took a lot of land and yard away from my parents' yard and then from the house that I currently live in now. While traffic did increase with the addition of Escondido subdivision, traffic congestion is not that bad. What's more concerning is the excessive speeders that travel down my road. I don't let my kids play in the front yard because of these speeding cars. The posted speed limit is 45 and it's not uncommon for cars to travel speeds upwards of 60 miles an hour. I read an article wanting to make a four-lane to access the airport for cargo to come in, stated by the city manager. There's already access to the airport from 509 and Loop 499. Bowden Hammer Road is a straight shot from the FBOs to 509. Why would you want to expand Grimes to a four-lane when there is no need? Traffic from San Benito coming from 509 take 106 to the loop. If not, they go straight to 508. Airport Director Marv Esterly stated the project will streamline cargo trucks. I don't think Marv knows that there's a back way to the airport off 509 and Bowden Hammer Road. When the airport extended the perimeter, they closed Old Rojondo Road. Did they care about airport access then? That was another way to get to the airport from Rojondo. This proposal is just another grab from the airport and the Harlingen EDC with no actual traffic study. It's a bland statement in hopes of them getting what they want with no remorse for what it will do for the homeowners on Grimes. I'm going to close with this. Grimes Avenue from 509 to Loop 499 does not need to be widened. There are other means for cargo to the airport, and this would be a waste of taxpayers' money. Yards are small enough to hear cars race by. Backyards from Escondido have very little right-of-way and already, for this proposed widening, will take away yards, not just for me, but my neighbors, and literally put a highway in my front door. I extend my invitation to all the commissioners to come have a sit with me and my family to see how much traffic passes through Grimes, to see the cars speeding, and to see the few trucks that drive by my house every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Sarah Hefley, and her topic of discussion is the HEV Tennis Center.
Is Ms. Hefley present? Sarah Hefley?
Mayor, I think she may have wanted to be called, so I think staff's going to reach out to her on the phone.
Thank you.
Please leave your message for 956.
The next speaker is Roberto Zavala Jr., and his topic is the Harlingen Police Department Protocols.
As a concerned resident, I would love to see if procedures can be put in place to avoid having officers physically assaulting residents during arrest. Rather, it'd be training on descaling situations. Another solution would be hire more female officers because too many Harlingen women are getting beaten by multiple male officers during calls that officers respond to. The next speaker is Linda Carter, and her topic is proposal to make Grimes four lanes.
Good evening.
Good afternoon, ma'am. If you could please state your name and address, please.
Linda Carter, 3801 East Grimes.
Thank you.
Ever since I heard about this flawed move of widening Grimes, I have been thinking, why not use Highway 106's four lanes instead of widening Grimes? You would access to the airport off 509 and have access from 106 to 499. So why come in and widen Grimes Road? Do you really want to bring cargo trucks down a four-lane road in a residential area? That just doesn't make any sense. So me being a resident of Grimes Road, I am not in favor of you taking more of my front yard by widening Grimes. You need to come out here and sit for a couple of days and see how fast the traffic down this road goes. And especially at night, can be worse. I have lived here for 40 years. This would be a nice new race track.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Luis Garcia, and he'd like to discuss VAB parking extension.
Hello, Mayor, Commissioners. Luis Garcia, representing the Veterans Advisory Board. In regards to Agenda L and Consent Agenda, the Veterans Advisory Board would like to bring to attention the fact that we were not advised of the extension requests nor need for said extensions. Therefore, we did not have ample opportunity to convene and submit an official written recommendation. That recommendation would have included our detailed endorsement for the extension of the license assisting with the parking issue at the VA clinic. And the notice to the board would have assisted us in advising veterans of the issues. We believe that the Veterans Advisory Board should be brought into the discussion for consideration and solutions. We are bound by the city ordinance in which it states that the Veterans Advisory Board is to advise the city commission on any and all things veteran-related. The city should begin practice of bringing any and all issues that pertain to the veteran community to the board, no matter how big or small. The city ordinance that governs our board must be followed so that decisions are made with the veteran community in mind. The license extension might appear to be a minor agenda, sorry, a minor agenda item, but it's the practice of exercising the board for the manner in which it's intended to consult and advise on the items that are concerned for the veteran community. Our veterans have a voice and our board was created to represent that voice. We respectfully request that going forward, the city manager and city commission bring all veteran issues to the board for advisement as per the city ordinance and that our city representatives be present at all veteran advisory board meetings to document, share, advise, and exchange information. In closing, we want to thank the commissioners for their careful consideration of the veterans you have chosen to serve on the Veterans Advisory Board. We are a strong team now and we're ready and willing to serve our veterans in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
The next speaker is Norma Pettito, and she'd like to discuss the Humane Society of Harlingen and Animal Control. Norma Pettito. Okay, her comments regarding the Humane Society. The Humane Society of Harlingen is the only no-kill shelter in the valley. This is something I am very proud of for our city. By this, I mean, however, that every other city brings their unwanted or stray animals here because they know they won't be euthanized. The shelter is beyond capacity at this time, and the city of Harlingen needs to stop having Animal Control deliver animals to them daily. This is not sustainable, and we need another solution. The Humane Society cannot continue to take in more animals as they have run out of space and may likely turn to euthanization if a solution cannot be found. This is something they've been able to avoid for the past three years. Currently, the shelter has about 200 pets in foster care already. I am one of those fosters, and I foster as much as I can to help them out, but I believe the city can do more to help also. Funding is a great start as it helps the shelter staff continue to offer low-cost meds and spay and neuter services. If more funding can be given to the Humane Society, that is a great start to help in their efforts. What I am asking here is that, one, Animal Control stop delivering animals to the shelter as they are over capacity and can no longer take in any animals at this time. They need some time to get current animals adopted, fostered, or rescued before they can continue to take in animals from the city of Harlingen Animal Control. Number two, I am asking you to consider implementing a city ordinance requiring all pet owners to spay and neuter their pets. This has been implemented in other cities in Texas, including Abilene and San Angelo, and a similar ordinance in Austin. Harlingen Humane Society cannot take any more pets, and the city of Harlingen must find an alternative for animal control until the Harlingen Humane Society can handle on their own situation. I respectfully ask that the city of Harlingen take immediate action regarding animal control and that you please consider implementing the spay and neuter ordinance. Thank you for your time. Okay, the next speaker is Berta Cavazos, and her topic is mandatory neutering and spaying.
Berta Cavazos?
Okay. Her comments. The Humane Society is constantly being bombarded with too many dogs and cats. The city of Harlingen needs to pass a mandatory ordinance.
Melinda?
The next speaker is Jessica Cantu, and her topic is enforce mandatory spay and neuter.
Jessica Cantu? And the next one is Joy Ray. If you want to call out her name as well while she reads the comments. Joy Ray?
Okay. Her comments are, raising my voice for those that do not have one, the animals of Harlingen and the greater Rio Grande Valley. The number of animals wandering the streets is dangerous and inhumane. The amount of animals being taken by the city to the Humane Society is unsustainable. The rescue organizations are unable to keep up with intake and vetting costs, and we cannot solve this without your help. The solution would be, this is preventable with the proper change management techniques in place. Support mandatory spay and neuter laws, secure and distribute additional funding and resources for the community to care for their animals. City backing of the ordinances in place by making sure animals are cared for, have proper fences, and proactively vetted. Let's push to be the first city in South Texas to enforce much-needed change here and throughout the valley. The next speaker is Joy Ray.
And the next after that will be Michelle Von Stein, if you can. Michelle Von Stein.
Her topic is the animal shelter. The Humane Society of Harlingen needs a larger building, a safer location, and more money to take care of all abandoned animals in this city. It is a disgrace. How can we be a world-class destination when we have animals roaming the streets hurt and pregnant?
Michelle Von Stein is also not present. Can we look for Bryn Baker while she reads the comments? Bryn Baker.
Okay, Michelle Von Stein would like to discuss issuing a fine for anyone with an unfixed animal. Her comments, animals need to be spayed and neutered, some form of regulation on anyone with an unfixed animal.
Okay, and then I know Ms. Flores is here. If we can get her ready after we hear of Ms. Bryn Baker's comments.
Okay, Bryn Baker, her topic is animal welfare. We need mandatory spay and neuter laws to be in place and enforced. We need funding at the state and city level to provide education and resources to the community. We need strategic planning to ensure the Humane Society of Harlingen isn't overcapacity on the regular. We need change, and it starts with the city.
Thank you. Elaine Flores?
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I just wanted to take this opportunity to again acknowledge and say thank you all so very much. There was a situation that occurred at our restaurant, Don Goyito, and I contacted Commissioner Daniel Lopez, and Daniel Lopez made a couple of calls, and I thanked Gabe Gonzalez also and others that were involved. It just shows to me again, it proves that you all are keeping your word to the community in following up with what you said you would do, and you're doing it. And we appreciate that very much. I know you hear a lot of complaints, a lot of negative things, and it's very seldom that you hear something saying, "Thank you." So kudos to you all and to Commissioner Perez also, who, in conjunction with Commissioner Lopez, took one of the ideas that Fred Uribe and Rick Silva had, ran with it, and tomorrow night, we have the function in Gutierrez Park. And then, again, I made a suggestion to the mayor by phone about doing a little something extra Friday night at the convention, Christmas lighting, and she made a call. We got the call and we got a confirmation on it, which just shows that, again, you do listen and you do consider what we say. Mayor, you have set a high bar, and your leadership obviously makes a big difference, and it just shows that the city of Harlingen slowly, but it is getting to where it needs to be. And Commissioners, all of you, I know that you're not, I'm not familiar with all your work in all your districts, but Commissioner Lopez, today's status report that you posted, I think, was awesome because you brought us up to date on what's happening in our district and what some of the projects coming up are. Having that report was tremendous, and we can speak about it with other people and let them know when they say, "Well, this is not being done," or whatever. Well, here's the proof that it is. And I hope that the other Commissioners are following suit and reporting to their respective districts what you're doing, what you're working on, and what we can expect. And not just for us to expect from you, but what you expect from us also, because this is a team effort. It's you all and it's us. So once again, I thank you all very, very, very much.
Thank you, Ms. Flores.
Our last speaker is Desi Martinez, and he'd like to speak on several agenda items.
Desi Martinez, 1806 Haverford. And I do agree with all these folks have been saying here, and we do appreciate your work. Get paid less than a dollar an hour for your volunteer work as a commissioner and mayor. So that is, thank you very much, and happy holidays. Starting from the bottom up, the appraisal district appointment is a very important appointment. As an economist, the national economic indicators show that the housing market bubble has started to reduce at 17 percent. to reduce at 17% and going down pretty quickly. And whoever you appoint there, I'd like, you know, we don't know who the gentleman is, and I saw the name, but who we all appoint there, it's hopefully that they'll account that into effect, that we've been living in a bubble in terms of the housing market and other expenses, that they need to take to that board that, to reduce the appraisals accordingly. And our sales tax have increased, and that we do some kind of adjustment for the folks and their properties and their property taxes. In terms of the EDC, as an economic developer myself in the surrounding areas and rural areas, it's important that the work program that's been displayed, we're on very crossroads right now every two years in Austin, and I submitted not only in the newspaper but to you directly some provisions that are needed to improve our area, to become more competitive in economic development with industrial, commercial, residential, and other. They have no play in that progress, and they should. And the only play they have is funding the lobbyists. Fortunately, after three decades, this is the first time I talk to them today. Fine gentleman, he knows his stuff. Now, I hope that all the submissions that we give them will be doing some effect to bring more progress and wealth to this nation, to this nation, to the city and its people, including better jobs that pay. Finally, in the applications to smart program of transportation, it's important that our planner or director of special projects be told through all of us that the railroad system needs to work with us and the county, as you are an employee of the county commissioner, to work with us in bringing more crossings, whether pipe or other, on our railroad system for water drainage and sewer, so we can loop our water, so we can have proper sewer connectivity, and also for our drainage to be able to go to the Arroyo, west-south, and potentially some east. I appreciate that. I want to make those comments.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Those are all our speakers today.
Okay, so that concludes our citizen communication, and we will start with our proclamation commemorating the 100th anniversary of the Valley Beauty Supply.
Do we have here anyone from the Valley Beauty Supply?
I think, there you go.
Valley Beauty Supply? Come on over. Or I can come to you. How about that? I think it's a little different. I'll just speak really loud. Hi, how's it going? These are the fourth or third generation. We're fourth generation and it's fifth generation.
Wow.
I've been reading about you today, and you had a celebration recently, and so I'm excited to share this with the City of Harlingen. We are commemorating the 100th anniversary of the Valley Beauty Supply right here in the City of Harlingen. So whereas Valley Beauty Supply was founded 100 years ago in 1922, about five years ago, and prior to becoming Valley Beauty Supply, so that even though this senior, great-grandfather of the Lopez family began selling straight rangers to barbers on Courseback. A celebration was held on October 16, 2022, in commemoration of its 100-year anniversary at the Harlingen Convention Center. And whereas Valley Beauty Supply is an integral part of this community and through five generations, the Lopez family have kept the same mission to provide the members of part of the Harlingen community the opportunity to start their own business in the beauty and barber industry and maintain a serious commitment to perfecting their business for their clientele. And whereas the Lopez family have worked hard for the past 100 years, showing great dedication and support to the economy of the City of Harlingen. So now, therefore, on behalf of the City of Harlingen, I, Norma Secopira, Mayor of this great city, do hereby proclaim December 7, 2022, as Valley Beauty Supply 100th year anniversary. Woo-hoo! I also congratulate you and commend you on your commitment to helping businesses. I know that several small businesses in this community are paying the way forward, and so I'm sure that they will grateful to you and the rest of the park. So thank you so much. And who should I give this? I'm going to picture him off. I'm sure. Sorry, I don't know everyone's name, but I can't quite see you, so I can't remember that one. All right. Ready, one, two, three? One more. Can we get one more big round of applause? Pardon your voice. Here we go. All right, okay. So now for the rowing folks outside, the recognition award for the Harlingen Cardinal Water Polo.
That might reach that far.
I don't know. It's wide, it's. Like, this one's under the hood, goes through. What they should do is they should have a microphone, like, that they can just.
I'm here to definitely assess that.
All right, so we have a recognition award. The City of Harlingen congratulates and proudly presents this award to the Harlingen Cardinal Water Polo Boys Team 2022 to 2023. Our head coach is Daniel Odessi, and Daniel's with us today in the regional quarterfinals. We have George Arona, I'm sorry, Stephen Arona. And Josh, you still have even easier. Okay, Joseph Thano, I'm 14. Jay Neseña, Julian Senna, James Campbell, Ty, Noah, Noah Cabrera, Ibai Ortiz, Eli Warner, Aiden Valdez, Jacob Montes, Keith, Harry. Christopher Cantu, Andy Rodriguez, Miguel Hernandez, and Julio Lopez. In recognition of their excellent athletic performance and sportsmanship in the water polo competition, we present this recognition award today on December 7, 2022. Congratulations, boys. All right, congratulations.
Chief, can you call the girls' water polo in?
Girls!
Come on in, ladies. All here? Okay. So we have a recognition award. The City of Harlingen congratulates and proudly presents this award to the Harlingen Cardinal Water Polo Girls Team 2022 to 2023. We still have their head coach, Daniel Odessi, and we congratulate them as regional semifinals top 16. And in recognition of their excellent athletic performance and sportsmanship in the water polo competition, I present this award to you on this day of 7th of December of 2022. Congratulations. Yes. And if we can move everyone one step to your right. That's right. To your right. All those in the long row. All right. A lot of people taking pictures, so. Ready, one, two, three? Now we have Harlingen Cross Country. Hello.
You know that cross country because that's the Harlingen.
This is the, the. Yes. Okay, so this is the Harlingen congratulates and presents this award to the Harlingen Cross Country Cross Country Team, Harlingen South High School, 2022, 2023. We have several athletes to peer, but we have two presidents today, and the names are and the head coach is under weather, Ariana Montalvo. But these ladies received first place at the RITCBA meet of champions, ranked number one in the Rio Grande Valley, first place 32 5A district champs, and region board championship maybe placed fifth. Alexis Montecca advanced to the state country championship at 40th place. Nice. And recognition of their excellent athletic performance and sportsmanship in this state varsity cross country, I present to you this award on the 7th day of August. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
That was a Cardinals, we did, this is a Cardinals.
It's my honor to present this recognition award. The City of Harlingen congratulates and proudly presents this award to the Harlingen South Hawk Water Polo Girl Team of 2022 to 2023. Head coach Hector Estamilla Jr., and these ladies are top 16 and state of Texas district champions. And so in recognition of their excellent athletic performance and sportsmanship in the water polo competition, I present this award to you on the 7th day of December 2022. Congratulations on your hard work. So this is the Hawk Varsity. The girls' Hawk Varsity Tennis, Tennis Hawk Varsity Girls. All right, so the City of Harlingen wants to provide, or it's my honor to provide this recognition award. The City of Harlingen congratulates and proudly presents this award to you, the Harlingen South Hawk Varsity Tennis Girls Team of 2022 to 2023. Ladies here are here with the captain, Kate Morales, head coach, head coach Esca Milla Jr., and these ladies are 32 5A team district champions, Bird Bowl champions, UIL 5 district champions, UIL area champions, and ULI, I forgot five times, UIL 5A regional ranking number five. In recognition of their excellent athletic performance and sportsmanship in the tennis varsity competition, we present this award to you on the 7th day of 2022. Congratulations.
politically stacked, and there needs to change, where you have, take responsibility for your taxpayers and their needs, as they talked here today. I, as an economic community developer, tell you that what you're doing here of extending this, this is basically the extension of using money where there are potentially other funds available. You have a special director in special projects that knows about EDA, like I do, Economic Development Administration, U.S. Department of Commerce, and all the funding that's coming down, et cetera, that potentially with a proper study, we could do a property development out there inclusive of affordable housing. Our community, our young community, our talented community doesn't have opportunity to build a home in Harlingen because of that, the expense and cost of a lack of affordable housing. You're talking $200,000 homes, Treasury Hills area. The EDC's involvement has not been involved properly and uniformly working in the three zones of economic areas we have, the east, the central, and the west. I ask that you not do this until further study and input from people that done, like the Border Patrol, myself and others, that brought primary jobs to this city. I ask you to, please hold on this.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Mayor, I'd like to point out that this particular item has nothing to do with the Grimes Road extension. This is for the SOG property that we spoke about with the EDC. This is for the construction of a hundred thousand square foot building, has nothing to do with Grimes whatsoever.
Yeah, and I just, to further comment on that, I think there may have been some miscommunication or misin, not misinformation, but just the, there was an article run in the paper, and there may be some confusion, but this has nothing to do with that article, and so this has, this has been before the, I believe it's been before the commission on what day, I can't recall the.
We talked about this particular project in executive session with the.
Add Kelly Street, two homes for Kelly Street, and one more for Finley, so that there's going to be total of two for Finley. And that second one, if you can put it between Lozano Street and West Los Árbolos Circle.
Saucy, is this, is this proper, Saucy?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And Craig, we're, okay, wonderful. So do we have a, a motion with that amendment?
Motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. I did? Oh, I, because I wrote on it, oh, sorry. So, um, I did not mention L, but, so we'll go ahead and take that separate consideration and possible action to extend the revocable license for use of property by U.S. Veterans Administration of the City Soccer Complex Parking Lot for a temporary basis. Do we have a motion to approve this?
So move.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, and I will wear my glasses. Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor, excuse me. Um, we have Dr. Reiniger here for, um, letter H. She wanted to say a few words, if, if y'all don't mind.
Yes, I know, um, Gabe mentioned that. If you would like to step to the podium, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner, city administration and audience, it's my pleasure to be here tonight and just highlight a little bit about your consent item H. My name's Belinda Reiniger. I work for the University of Texas Health Science Center, Houston, and we've had the privilege of working with Harlingen for nearly a decade through a contract that my university provides to the city to do a health initiative called Tú Salud Secuente. You have a handout that hits some of the highlights on that. But I wanted to just, um, make mention that this partnership has not only impacted the participants of the city of Harlingen that we reached directly, but also has inspired small business growth, additional gyms and bike shops and healthy food vendors, um, a weight loss challenge, um, that happens annually, open streets initiatives and funding into the parks and hike and bike trail infrastructure over this decade. It also allows for some collaboration between the other cities and precincts in Hildago that we fund, in that the, um, the, the organizations, the staff that are hired through this funding collaborate, work together, bring in best practices to address health and, um, exercise in weight loss and healthy food in particular. Uh, you do have a wonderful, um, community health worker that is hired by this funding, Brenda Rojas, who, um, helps to coordinate, uh, nearly thirty-five free exercise classes every week that are open to the citizens and are in your facilities, so that it's easy for people to, um, come all hours of the day. Uh, and in addition, your media, things that's happening in Harlingen, we pick that up and we cross-promote it, so that there's even more awareness of what's happening in Harlingen to promote health, including on a Televisa segment and social media, on our website and in newspapers. Most importantly, I just want you to know that when we do engage residents, there, Brenda does screenings, identifies individuals who may need some extra attention or support in their health journey. Uh, when we do enroll people in the program, it does work. They lose weight, they eat more, more healthy, they, um, become more physically active, and so, um, you can see some of those numbers also highlighted in the program. So I just wanted you to know that the partnership and the information in the report represents real people with real improved lives, and we thank you for the opportunity to work with you, um, hopefully long into the future. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reiniger. And I would encourage you to sit with Christina, um, and maybe we can do some highlighting of the wonderful work, and I look forward to 2023. All right. Moving on to new business. Item number five, we have a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading, redesigning the geographical boundaries of an enterprise zone pursuant to Texas Government Code, Chapter 2303, and a tax reinvestment zone pursuant to Tax Code 312.204 and 312.11. And this item was tabled at the October nineteenth meeting. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to remove from the table and put it back into play.
Okay. In a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, so we have removed that from the table, and we will do, we will open it up for a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against? Mr. Martinez?
Desi Martinez, eighteen oh six, Haverford. Again, uh, part of, part of growth is also the take consideration of the people in that area. That area is District One, Commissioner, and, uh, there are three zones here, and I, I didn't know, but you, you've been, you have the same board members in each three zones. And it should be at least Zone Number Three over here in the west side of town, uh, our Commissioner, Zone Number One, our Commissioner, those are the taxpayers that pay money into it. There's been a movement from, for a decade, if not more, to have that area, that Grimes Street, developed. There's no feasibility study, economic or otherwise, except what you heard today from those folks that live there. As a former, uh, home builder, afford, of affordable homes, that's one of the only areas available that is affordable in terms of land that needs to be developed and studied for that purpose as well, with light industry. I understand, four roads are not needed. I, that gentleman and that lady made the point very clearly, in terms of how they live it. There's no need to extend that Grimes Road to Riondo. We're not part of any matrix at this point. We need to take care of our districts and use that $2 million that District One has, Commissioner, and that $400,000 that we have, we're here in this District Five, Commissioner, and that other $2 million, Commissioner, as you, as your taxpayers feel, they need it. But it gives the appearance that in the last decade, those three zones have been stacked, politically stacked, and there needs to change, where you have, take responsibility for your taxpayers and their needs, as they talked here today. I, as an economic community developer, tell you that what you're doing here of extending this, this is basically the extension of using money where there are potentially other funds available. You have a special director in special projects that knows about EDA, like I do, Economic Development Administration, U.S. Department of Commerce, and all the funding that's coming down, et cetera, that potentially with a proper study, we could do a property development out there inclusive of affordable housing. Our community, our young community, our talented community doesn't have opportunity to, to build a home in Harlingen because of that, the expense and cost of, of, of a lack of affordable housing. You're talking $200,000 homes, Treasury Hill, Treasury Hills area. The EDC's involvement has not been involved properly and uniformly working in the three zones of economic areas we have, the east, the central, and the west. I ask that you not do this until further study and input from people that done, like the Border Patrol, myself and others, that brought primary jobs to this city. I ask you to, please hold on this.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to point out that this particular item has nothing to do with the Grimes Road extension.
Thank you.
Uh, this is for the SOG property that we spoke about with the EDC. This is for the construction of a hundred thousand square foot building, uh, has nothing to do with Grimes whatsoever.
Yeah, and I just, um, to, to further comment on that, I think there may have been some miscommunication or misin, not misinformation, but just the, there was an article run in the paper, and there may be some confusion, but this has nothing to do with that article. And so this has, this has been before the, I believe, it's been before the commission on what day? I, I can't recall the...
Um, we talked, um, about this particular project in executive session
Okay.
with the EDC, and, um, this is the next step. Uh, I think the city attorney, uh, spelled out, uh, what he was going to be doing.
Yeah, actually, if I could add to this, this, this goes with the next agenda item, where we have a voluntary annexation agreement, because this is that land that's outside of the city limits, right?
Right, and you're going to read the caption?
Well, I'm going to read the caption, but I, I'd like to point out that this previous area had been previously designated a reinvestment zone and a tax zone, but the problem was that the, uh, it's been more than ten years since that designation, so we're just dotting our i's, crossing our t's, re-designating an area that was previously designated under both these statutes by the previous Harlingen City Commission.
Right.
And then we're, we're going to, and then, and then bring it in under that Economic Development Project for the warehouse.
Correct, and all the comments were still listened to, considered, and I know the commission will go back and, and, and consider that, and, and we'll talk at that, about that when the, at, at the relevant time.
Right.
But for now, can we read the caption?
We...
Unless, is there anyone else here to speak on, on behalf of this ordinance? Okay, so we'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask, uh, counsel to read the caption.
An ordinance of the city of Harlingen, re-designating the geographic boundaries of an enterprise zone pursuant to Texas Government Code, Chapter 2303, and a reinvestment zone pursuant to Texas Tax Code 312.204 and 312.211.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I was, I'm sorry, was that you, Commissioner Morales?
Opposed.
Opposed, okay.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Item six, we have a public hearing to consider an ordinance on second and final reading for the voluntary annexation and establish the initial zoning to Light Industry District for a Lot One and Lot, and Two, Block One, and all of the Reserve Area of Liberty subdivision recorded in Cabinet One, Page thirty-six ninety-one and thirty-six ninety-two. Map records of Cameron County, Texas, located on the west side of FM 509, approximately thirteen seventy-five, uh, feet south of Grimes Road, and this is, uh, presented by the EDC, by, uh, Mr. Cervantes.
Mayor, city commissioners, good evening. So this agenda item relates to the previous one. Here's an aerial photograph of the properties that the EDC owns that are requesting to annex. These are the properties in red and blue. Those are the properties that will allow the, the city to grow the tax base. Here are the sewer lines, the last, for the first reading, you were asking about the water and sewer lines. These are the, the sewer lines in the area, water lines in the area, so the infrastructure is, is there for the, for the growth of the area. This went before Planning and Zoning Commission, May twenty-fifth, and they recommended approval unanimously, so we just need to have us another public hearing for the second reading of the, of the ordinance.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I'm a little confused, there, there was some, so the infrastructure is already set up in this?
Yes, the, the water and sewer infrastructure is al, is already there in the area. Correct.
All right, because there was an item, what, about a month ago, and I asked you what the, who's going to take care of the, who's going to do the infrastructure? I don't know if it was this one, or because we...
Yes, so, as part of the project, there is a replat, I believe, in the works. The developer has to, any extensions of water lines or sewer lines associated with the replat for the project, the developer has to pay for that, not the city.
Not the city, not Water Works?
No, it's the, it's the developer of the replat.
What's that project again? Please remind me.
It's a, we're a large warehouse.
That's the SOG.
That's the one, okay, I'll read this one.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Public hearing, we need to have a public...
Thank you, Javier. We are now going to open, uh, the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against? Thank you, um, ladies.
Desi Martinez, uh, eighteen oh six, Haverford. Again, I'm not against development, it's that we are being misinformed. One is that this project's probably good. I looked up SOG, it's a consulting company, just like I am, out of Wesaco or up the valley, and they do projects in Willis County, I assume. We're not informed. I think we have to have more information. In the line of communications of economic development, when we developed five hundred jobs in this town in the nineties, it was because we didn't come and ask for anything from you all, we had to go look for sites. But we want to develop sites, we want, and I think the community deserves more proper and accurate information, as, you know, I'm, I'm not a dummy, but we're not bred in the newspaper, and everybody reads thereof, and these folks, but there is a, a demand, though, I think, in good conscience of, of development of our community, for looking at that east side, the central and the east side, in areas that we can develop, drain, proper, uh, water and sewer, et cetera. And initiative is that we need to take Austin to make this happen, but it's not centralized where we can all play in the same park, if I may. It, we're not against these growth types of things. What we need is, we like to have participation. It's our lives, it's our tax money too, theirs, and you all represent them in District One, District Two, District Three, District Four, District Five, and it was the purpose of districts to have you individually participate there, so that you could blossom those districts so well in a uniform fashion. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Anyone else here to speak for or against this, uh, ordinance?
Hi, Beverly Loftus with the Harlingen EDC. I just want to give a quick update, um, to Desi's point. Joaquin Spammer is, um, part of the developer here. Uh, he's the owner of the, of the development company or, that's coming in and developing this hundred and thirty thousand square feet space and opportunity to develop more space. Right now, the Harlingen EDC, uh, has no space for larger developments, uh, that need a hundred thousand square feet or more, and so the opportunity, uh, to bring in a developer and build that space is important and vital for economic development, especially when we receive, um, state leads from, uh, governor's office requesting, uh, over a hundred thousand square feet, and so, um, I appreciate your efforts tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Beverly. Anyone else here on this, uh, item? Mr. Leffwich?
Robert Leffwich, nine oh nine East Parkway. Yeah, I just wanted to, to speak in favor of this. I mean, this is, the annexation, the voluntary annexation is really the way we need to do business, because we are, like you said, we're going to get tax money. We're going to, it's going to contribute to property taxes. Even though we're going to probably do some kind of a tax abatement upfront as an incentive, down the road, this is going to be in the city. Their inventory, their capital investments are going to be taxed, and, you know, from a economic development perspective, that's what we want. We want them to participate, and we have laws that stipulate that they have to have, you know, employees that, you know, make certain amounts of money in order to get these incentives, so I just wanted to speak in favor of that, and I'm for annexation, so that we can control the abatement process better, and opposed to leaving it unannexed.
Thank you, Mr. Leffwich. Anyone else here to speak for or against this ordinance? Having no one else to speak, we'll close the public hearing, and, uh, thank you, Javier. Will you read the caption?
An ordinance extending the corporate limits of the city of Harlingen by annexing for full purposes Lot One and Two, Block One, and all of the Reserve Area of Liberty subdivision, located on the west side of FM 509, approximately one thousand three hundred seventy-five feet south of Grimes Road, and establishing the initial zoning to Light Industry District, binding the land to all of the acts, ordinances, resolutions, and regulations of the city, approving an annexation services agreement, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item seven, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a SUP to allow a tattoo studio in general retail district located at nineteen twenty-one East Tyler Avenue, Suite D, located along the north side of Tyler Avenue between Nineteenth and Twenty-first Streets, bearing a legal description of Lot Six, Seven, um, Lot Two, Harlingen Park subdivision, and the applicant is Tucker Guerrero. Javier?
Yes, we have a proposed tattoo studio that requires a special use permit. This is on, on the north side of Tyler, with halfway between Nineteenth and Twenty-first Streets, that central plumbing and electric is under, under construction over here. And that's the building where they're proposing the studio in one of the suites on Tyler. That's the floor plan for the proposed tattoo studio. Aerial photograph. Staff recommends approval. Hours of operation shall be Tuesday to Saturday from twelve PM to six PM, and between six PM and ten PM, it will be by appointment only. The proposed studio shall only provide services to adults eighteen plus in, in age with identification, identification only. Must maintain the required off-street parking spaces and comply with all the requirements from the different city departments. This went before PNC on November ninth, and no one spoke in opposition, and the board recommended approval unanimously.
Thank you, Javier. Is there, uh, we will now open this up for a public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against this ordinance? Having no one here to speak, we will close the public hearing, and I will ask, unless there's any discussion from the commission, I'd ask the, uh, city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Harlingen to issue...
I'm sorry, hold on.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to introduce myself. Uh, my name is Tucker. I will be the owner of Frequent E, so if you guys need any tattoos, just let me know.
Thank you.
Welcome to Harlingen, Mr. Tucker. And we are all here in support of small business, so I'm glad you were here. I wanted to tell you that, but, uh, you weren't awake back there.
No, I just wanted to blow the thing up, you know, I mean, by all means. I just wanted to give them a shot, you know? I just wanted to thank you guys.
Thank you. Now we will close the public hearing, and, uh, Mark?
Yep, and an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Harlingen to issue a special use permit to Tucker Guerrero to allow a tattoo, tattoo studio in a general retail district located at nineteen twenty-one East Tyler Avenue, Suite D, along the north side of Tyler Avenue between Nineteenth and Twenty-first Streets, bearing a legal description of Lot Six and Seven, Block Two, Harlingen Park subdivision, subject to the conditions outlined in the body of the ordinance.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Best of luck to you, uh, Mr. Guerrero. Item eight, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to amend the code of ordinance of the city of Harlingen, Chapter one oh nine subdivision, Article eighteen?
No, one through eight.
One through eight, sorry, and I have glasses. Applicant, um, and so, Javier?
Yeah, so if you remember, we had that meeting on August twenty-ninth with the developers and the builders. Uh, a lot of the comments, some of the comments pertain to the subdivision development guide that we already, um, amended to address some of the comments, but other comments pertain to the subdivision ordinance. So we went through the, the entire ordinance, and we were submitting changes to you. Uh, if you like, I can go through the major changes quickly. So, uh, first major change is that language was removed to allow developers to apply for variances regarding paving and curb and gutter requirements. So we have one subdivision right now that they're waiting to apply for a variance, so they need this approved, so that they can apply for, for the variance. So it's going to allow more variances to be, uh, applied for and considered by PNC and the city commission. So that's, I think that's one good change. Uh, lan, language was added to allow developers the opportunity, opportunity to appeal decisions made by the Planning and Zoning Commission to the city commission. Uh, that's something that you mentioned that was important, uh, to you, Mayor. So language was added, uh, any subdivision that is denied by PNC, the developer has an opportunity to appeal to, to you for, for reconsideration.
I, I had a question on that one, because I know I was reading it when we're, when I was reading the packet. So right now, like, like, refresh my memory. Um, when, when someone applies for a variance, um, and it comes to the commission over here, um, what, what do you have to get in order for it to get approved? Because I think there was some times where we had to get, um, not just a majority, but like four out of the five?
No, that was, that was removed when we, uh, when the subdivision ordinance was amended in twenty twenty.
Uh-huh.
That was the case before, and then in twenty twenty, we changed it to a simple majority.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
So a simple majority of the city commission can approve, uh, a variance request.
Okay.
And that's something that came up at the meeting when we had it with the developers, that they wanted to be able to appeal decisions by, by PNC. Language was modified to clarify the subdivision process. Language was added to not require fire hydrants for proposed subdivisions within the North Alamo Water Supply Corporation, CCN, contingent with a platnot. Language was added to exempt from the subdivision process properties intended for single-family residential use under certain conditions. I know Mr. David Gomez is very interested in this amendment, so that he can get his building permit for his daughter's house. The length of cul-de-sacs to be allowed up to thirteen feet in length, right now it's only one thousand feet in length. The requirement for the paving and curb and gutter for perimeter streets to be limited to subdivisions within the city limits only. The requirement that developers of commercial, industrial, or multifamily subdivisions be required to escrow funds, four required sidewalks to be eliminated. A simple platnot will take care of that, getting the sidewalks. Language is modified that if, if internal sidewalks are completed in residential subdivisions with no caps remaining, the developer will get the fifteen percent, uh, escrows back in full. This went before PNC November ninth. Several people spoke in support of the ordinance amendments, and the board recommended approval unanimously.
Javier, can you, um, tell me how the, that change will help the Canos with their...
Yeah, so, right now we have, uh, an exemption to the subdivision process, that if the property was split before nineteen seventy-eight, nineteen seventy-eight is the, the year of the first subdivision ordinance. So if a property was split before that, it's considered grandfathered. In their case, the split was done a few years ago, but the intent is single-family residential. So this will expand the exemptions to allow them to be exempted, even though the split of the property took place after the year nineteen seventy-eight. So, but only, only one split to be allowed, and it has to be single-family residential, and it has to have access to a public street. So under certain conditions, uh, Mr. Gomez will qualify, so he's very excited about, about this.
Wonderful.
I'd like to point out that the, um, the variance requests are only for the Planning and Zoning Commission. There are some variances that the commission cannot list, cannot hear. Uh, those are the ones that go to the Construction Board of Adjustments. Those go straight to District Court, uh, if they want to appeal. They will not come to the city commission.
Yeah, those are variances to the zoning ordinance.
Right.
And they go to the zoning Board of Adjustments. Uh, here we're talking about variances to the subdivision ordinance. Those, those go before you.
So it sounds like we've made some common sense changes
Yes.
to, to this after the, the hearing with the developers.
This will, this will be very helpful to, uh, residential developers and commercial developers.
And there's a few projects that we have ongoing that this will benefit, commercial projects.
Excellent. Moving Harlingen forward, we thank you so much
Yes.
for your hard work on, on this, Javier. Um, do we have any questions from the commission? No?
Yeah, um, do it into public hearing.
Okay, um, so now we will open this up for a public hearing. Is there anyone here that is wanting to speak for or against? Please, um, come to the mic.
My name's, uh, David Gomez, and I'm, I'm for it, and I would like for you to approve of something like that, uh, for us, so we can be able to build a, a house, one house. And, uh, we've been trying for a couple of years, and you've been coming up with all these restrictions and stuff that haven't let us, uh, build a house, and, uh, so we would like for you to see if you could approve that, so that we can go on and, and build our dream home and, and live here in Harlingen and work here and everything else.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Gomez, and remember the commission here that helped, that, that made it possible after those years.
There's a lot of other people like me that are, are trying to build a house, and that I know, and I told them that I would speak up for them, and if I can do it, they can do it too, and they can live here in Harlingen and build their dream home and live here and, you know, and work here and everything else. That's why they... That's why they come from up north down here to be here, to live with their parents and stuff like that and and they like Harlingen, so. And I've been living here for the past seventy years, so I know.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being advocate for change. Thank you. Anyone else here, excuse me, to speak for or against?
In support of that, back almost two years ago, the Gomez family came to me, asked him, give me a dollar and buy me a cup of coffee and let's get on it. And it was COVID and some of the things that are happening during the COVID period, I understand and a lot of Zoom meetings that happened. But some are practical things, Mayor, and we voted for you all, not in your district, this district, but some of these are practical things to make the living and our land functional so they could coexist. And we're not a regional area. We got some regional issues that we're going to take into Austin and I'll be sending to you and to the other departments, et cetera. But two years ago, I started in this mission to help these families, the old kind of families, the old Gomez families and the many others. And their children and grandchildren, they want to come back home but can't find sites, can't find opportunity. And that's all we're asking, that you work with us out here in the community that know something, have done something and during this critical time, when there are funds, twenty-seven billion dollars in Austin, that or modify some of the rules that we play on, make it a fair playing field for our communities that are economically depressed areas, that we do something. Not just say and argue amongst ourselves. There are solutions. But open up your mind, Mayor, and work with all of us. Because I haven't asked anything of you except come here for three minutes and work with these families. And I'll work with the Grimes families too. And I'll work with the veteran over there at Pecon Street because I just buried my brother Purple Heart. And my cousin buried his son as in Iraq, died in Iraq. We will prevail together and we can coexist, but we got to listen to each other because we have a lot of smart people out here too and we want to participate. So that's all it is. Thank you very much. I don't understand that part because I just do my three minutes and leave, but that other part about the ETJ in terms of water and sewer and drainage, I think it needs a little put under the microscope, but that's a planning thing we'll talk later. But because we annex things and now for the whole hysteria, we have drainage and sewer problems and storm problems. And in the center, we're still trying to push water to the North Arroyo. We don't have North Arroyo, the new one's called the North Drainage Stitch. There is no North Arroyo. There's only one Arroyo. So please bear with us, work with us and open up your minds and hearts to us and we will coexist with each other.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Anyone else here to speak for or against this ordinance? Okay, we'll close.
May I say something?
Yeah.
So I want to give kudos to Mayor Norma for putting all this together with the engineers and the developers. It was, it was quite an educational experience for me and it's time to move into the two thousand and twenty-three era of the city and advance things. So I'm just thrilled that, Javier, that you've worked on all this with all that input. Let's go do it.
Amen. Thank you for that. And of course to Rolando Vela and to the developers and everyone that was, that was present. We do appreciate, we appreciate you. Thank you so much. And so now we will close the public hearing and we read the caption.
Yes, ma'am. In ordinance amending the code of ordinance of the city of Harlingen, Chapter one oh nine subdivisions, Article.
One through eight. One through eight.
Oh, one through eight. Throughout providing for publication, providing for a penalty not to exceed two thousand dollars per violation thereof, providing for severability and ordaining other provisions related to the subject matter.
Motion? Wait. That's not what it says here. Under number eight B.
Commissioner, that's, that's the right one he read. That's for the amending the ordinance, Chapter one oh nine.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm going off of what was sent us.
Okay.
On the agenda.
Well, I have. He read as well I got.
Okay, well, it's wrong here then on the agenda.
On the actual agenda, okay.
Okay.
In the.
My apologies.
That's okay.
Just making sure we're on the same page.
We know that Mark doesn't have, doesn't have control of the, of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I'd like to make a minor amendment to the, to the language. If you have your iPad out, it's page one thirty-five of our packet. If you don't, it is section one oh nine hyphen twenty-eight hyphen appeals. It'll be paragraph B, second sentence, which states, "The city commission must hear the request within fifteen days after the request is submitted to the planning and development director." So everyone where I'm at.
Can you, can you say the page again? I'm sorry.
On our iPad, it's one thirty-five. One thirty-five, one thirty-six.
What section? One oh nine?
Yeah, one oh nine twenty-eight. It's the appeals.
One oh nine twenty-eight.
Second sentence, second paragraph of B, second sentence, which reads, "The city commission must hear the request within fifteen days." Wait till everyone gets there.
My pen's loading. What did you want to change it to, Commissioner?
Let me wait till they get there.
Okay.
I don't, what's that? You said one oh eight, what?
One oh nine hyphen twenty-eight hyphen appeals.
Almost there. Okay, got it.
The line says, "The city commission must hear the request within fifteen days after the request is submitted to the planning and development director." I would like just to add a little portion in there for it to read now. "The city commission must hear the request within fifteen days." The way I wrote it is comma, "or at the first regular meeting after the expiration of the fifteen days." I've just, if something were to happen, we have a natural disaster, something like that, I just want to have a little back gate right there for us. That's it.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
I can send it to you, screenshot it to you, to y'all what I'm proposing, but it's just.
Well, this will have a second reading, Commissioner, so we can, we can, we can make sure that, we can look at it then and make sure we got it right. But, but if you would just send, send us something that we can actually put that into the.
So I still make a motion.
So we're going to withdraw the motion or?
No, I'll still make a motion and Gabe and Daniel can work it out for the second reading.
Okay.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Post? Motion carries. Thank you.
Victory.
All right. Item nine, consideration and possible action to adopt a resolution directing staff to proceed with the right-of-way abandonment request from two adjacent property owners for a zero-point-eleven acre tract of land being a four-foot by one-twenty-foot road right-of-way for Wright Avenue located on the east side of K Street approximately five hundred feet south of Tyler Avenue. Javier?
Yes, Mayor, we have some right-of-way that was dedicated in nineteen forty-three here on K Street that is close to Tyler. That was supposed to be a street back in the forties, but it never was built. And then subsequently to that, you have Thomas Jefferson School to the east, so that street is never going to happen. So the property owners, Ms. Walker, Mr. and Mrs. Walker and Ms. Vargas over here, are interested in purchasing the land from the city. There is a process to do this. There's a survey that has to be done. There's an appraisal that has to be done. I've been consulting with the city attorney and we came up with a plan to make this happen. That's the right-of-way that got dedicated in the forties. That's an aerial photograph of the land that is just grass that is being maintained by the Walkers and Ms. Vargas. So it's just, and here's a photo of the property. So it looks like a, like a private lot, but it's city right-of-way that is abandoned, has been maintained by the neighbors that they're interested in purchasing from the city. We're all in support of that. We just, there's a lot of state law and regulations to do this. Like I said, a survey has to be done, an appraisal, and after that, it's going to come before you to approve the sale to the neighbors. So right now we're just, we're just asking you to approve the concept of the project. The neighbors are here in case you have any questions. And then I'll work with, with the city attorney to continue to work with the applicants to make this project a reality.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item ten, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an advanced funding agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation and represent the city of Harlingen in all matters related to the Dixieland Road Street Safety Lighting Project. Craig?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Craig Cook, Assistant City Manager. Back in June, Techstat awarded us over four hundred and ten thousand dollars for construction of street lighting on Dixieland Road from Garrett to Rangerville Road. We, the city, will be responsible for the design. And in fact, tomorrow, we'll be receiving qualifications packages and we will select a designer to do this. But this agenda item is to approve the city manager of signing the, the AFA with Techstat. We don't have it yet, but when we get it, we'd like him to sign it to continue the project.
Sounds good.
I'm sorry.
Okay, any discussion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, Craig. All right. Consideration, item eleven, consideration and possible action to approve seventy-five thousand of city ARPA funds to partially fund drainage improvements at the Adams Garden drain outfall into the IBWC North Floodway. Gabe?
Mayor, members of the commission, this is a joint project between the city of Harlingen, Cameron County Drainage District Number Five, Rolando Vela is here from DD Five, and then Cameron County Drainage District Number Six. Gilbert Cavan is here from DD Six. This entire project would help alleviate the flooding that's currently in Adams Garden. It is, the total cost for this project is, is over two hundred thousand dollars, but our share would only be seventy-five thousand. DD Five would fund another seventy-five thousand dollars and Drainage District Number Six would, would fund the remainder. They were estimating the, the cost at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars approximately. Their engineer, Dustin Moore, came up with a cost estimate. So we're asking for approval to allocate twenty-five thousand dollars of ARPA funds toward this project.
Gabe, I reviewed Mr. Moore's letter. And if you look at the fifth paragraph down, last sentence, talks about the addition of a larger box culverts coupled with addition of the pumps would allow for constant positive drainage of the CCDD six service area, which includes parts of La Fedia, Santa Rosa, and Harlingen. Have the cities of La Fedia and Santa Rosa been approached about helping finance part of this?
No, I don't, I don't believe they have, Commissioner. It's just been the city and both drainage districts. Now, I think, I think what you're referring to is to actually oversize what they're contemplating of installing. This particular would just really help the Adams Garden area. If we want to do what they're proposing, I'm sure the cost will be significantly higher. But this, this was intended to actually relieve the flooding from that subdivision.
Okay. Thank you.
I got a quick one. This seventy-five thousand, is this also coming from what was going to be given to the?
No, this is from our original ten million dollars that we had.
Not from the.
No, not from what we took from them. That specifically, that was designed for the Lozano area, the premium pay for police and fire and the simulation, fire simulation units.
So this sounds like a joint effort between the drainage districts and the city of Harlingen to improve the subdivision that is in the city of Harlingen. Is that right?
Yes.
And the funds had already been allocated or they're not being taken away from any other project?
No, we still have money in there that was set aside for construction funds. And we're now taking a portion of that and assigning it to this particular project.
Great.
Yeah, this was a project that Rolando reached out to me for and I referred it to Gabe and to Craig. Basically, it's going to help some of the areas in my district, especially around Bass Boulevard, around that area. It should help them, you know, alleviate some of the flooding. So that's the reason why I brought it to Gabe.
Sounds great.
And all of us did, I sent it to Craig and he looked at it with the engineers and we thought it was a great project, especially since we didn't have to pay for all of it, so.
Right. We're very fortunate to have an engineer on our management team to help with these questions and to have Luis and, and these wonderful gentlemen here. So it sounds like an excellent project. I'm excited. Do we have any other discussion? No? Have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Thank you. Sorry. Item twelve, consideration and possible action to accept or reject bids and award a contract for the two thousand and twenty-two street improvement program under bid number two thousand and twenty-two oh three. And Luis?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Luis Vargas. I'm the city engineer. And much like the caption says, this is to ask for your approval to accept the lowest responsive bidder for the next streets to be repaired in the next year. These streets were approved by city commission last year in June, I'm sorry, July. And the streets are either a mill and overlay, simple mill and overlay, or they involve a more in-depth reconstruction of the base and subgrade and, and all that good stuff. The, the street, I guess the money comes from, of course, the, the street maintenance fee. And the budget generated for this cycle is two-point-four million and sixty-four thousand. Since the construction estimate we had for this year, it was two-point-nine million, which by the way, we, we have a, a good team that, that produces accurate construction estimates because the, the lowest responsive bidder was just a little high of that estimate with three million. There is, since the budget's two-point-four and the lowest base bid is two-point-six and, and we had to exclude commerce, we advertised the project with all the streets as a base bid and had commerce as an alternate because we thought that we didn't have enough money to cover all those streets. And the base bid was two-point-six, the budget is two-point-four. The recommendation is to remove commerce from the, from the scope, accept the lowest bidder and do the rest of the streets. And there is a difference between two-point-six and two-point-four, so we are coordinated with the finance department to fund that difference. The lowest bidder is Foremost Paving with two million six, two million six hundred and sixty-eight thousand and ninety-six. That's base bid again. The alternate was commerce with three hundred and ninety thousand, three hundred and eighty-three. Staff recommends the award of the lowest bidder being Foremost Paving. And happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
The part of commerce that you're going, that we're going to exclude is just the, the north part or right where we're at?
It's the south part. It's right here by PNC Bank and it's going to take you all the way to Fair Park.
Yes, from Fair Park to Harrison and then also Harrison to Tyler. There's a map in the. There's a map in the packet.
Yeah. Is this? I apologize.
No, go ahead.
Commerce, it's one of our busiest streets in town. I already talked to Craig about figuring out different ways to finance it, to hopefully get it done in 2023. Worst-case scenario, if we can't get it financed in 2023, will it be the top of the list for 2024?
So, um, we could do that or actually wait until we get a decision from the grant that we're working on for Commerce for the whole, for the whole stretch of Commerce? Thinking about four to five years, we would be able to start reconstruction, full debt reconstruction of Commerce, and that means the whole right-of-way sidewalks, utilities, and, and of course, the pavement.
Commissioner, right now, we have a grant to design, uh, the plans and specs for Commerce, and so, uh, our position is that we proceed with that, get it redesigned. Uh, that will probably take us i- into 2024 because we don't expect, uh, an AFA for that until maybe six or seven months from now. And we can't spend any money before we get the AFA from TechStot. Uh, we can, but we're not going to get reimbursed for it. So the idea is to have it redesigned, completed, and then use those plans to try to solicit funding for the construction.
Yeah, my concern about that is one of our busiest streets and best-case scenario, four to five years, you know?
Well, we're, we're not, we're not going to abandon Commerce. We're still going to keep patching it, just trying to make sure that it, that it maintained its integrity until we can get it completely redone. So we're still going to have some maintenance work, but that's not just a full reconstruction of it.
Any other questions for Luis? No, okay. Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. And item 13, we have consideration and possible action to approve a consulting agreement with Terrell, Terrell Smith and William Yarnell Consultants for a one-year period. Gabe?
Um, Mayor, the, uh, the consulting contract that we have with, uh, William Yarnell and Terrell Smith has expired and we'd like to extend the contract for one more year. Um, these funds are reimbursed to the city from the EDC, so, um, normally it's a two-year contract, but I think just trying to get through the, uh, legislative process, we'd like to just have for one year. And then once it comes to its, uh, terminus, before then figure out what we're going to do. Either go out for RFQs or, or keep the consultants. We did have a meeting today with, uh, Commissioner Morales and William Yarnell talking about some of the projects possibly for Water Works. And so, uh, Tim is going to give us some, uh, projects to actually forward to the consultants so he can see what he can do, work his magic, try to get us some mu, some money for those projects.
Sounds good. Um, given that we are quickly approaching this next session, it's, sounds like the smart thing to do in order to be able to work with our consultants that we have to present the best in our limited timeframe. Do, any, any, any other questions, Commissioner?
I, I'm a little concerned here. Um, their agreement expired back in, uh, September.
September 12th.
This is already December.
Yes.
And I, for one, after you got on board as a city commissioner, I asked to meet with these guys or, or get some information. The, uh, the, the thing is, and Desi's been here and other people have been here, and I've asked you, what are we doing with the legislation that's coming, that's around the corner? I lucked out and anybody here would have walked in just like I did a couple of days ago without knowing that this individual was here. And in talking to him, I pushed, trying to set up something pretty fast to meet up with the Water Works and thank, I'm grateful that Tim and his group were able to meet up with us this morning. That was something that I was not expecting. But looking at their contract and looking at the previous ones, okay? The, the thing is, on the previous contracts that I had been asking for about one week ago today, and we got them, we, all of us got them, I think, yesterday, they have a, a termination clause. This one that's, that was given to us today doesn't have a termination clause. But more concerning than that...
Are, are you talking about the one that we're considering right now?
Yes. The one that was key when we got here. Okay? It doesn't have that, but...
Uh, it does, Commissioner. It says it will terminate September 30th, 2023.
No, it, see, on the other previous, on the other previous, um, uh, contracts, it says, "Either party may terminate this agreement upon 30 days prior to written notice to the other party. In event of the termination, payment to consultants shall be prorated for the period during which services were provided." So that clause is not on this contract. But what's very concerning to me is what have we provided them so, so they can continue? What have you provided?
We, they've actually been, uh, attending some of the legislative committee meetings that we've had here at the city. As you know, the mayor and two commissioners serve on that committee, and there are other, uh, entities within the city that serve on that committee as well. They've been there to listen to some of the, uh, requests from entities like, uh, HCISD, the Port of Harlingen, Valley Baptist, Harlingen Medical Center. So all of us have been asked to contribute our priorities and our funding requests to the lobbyists. Not, not, excuse me, not all of them have finished submitting those requests, and I think, um, to date, they only have about 45 to 50% of the entities have responded. So, um, we're still going to proceed with our requests. We've given them drainage projects. Um, we're meeting with, with, uh, Tim to see what he wants to provide, uh, for the legislature. But as, as you heard today, William said that the majority of funding from, uh, the Water Development Board is either loans, and that's something that Tim states he doesn't want to apply for as loans. So he's looking for other avenues, and so they're going to try to figure out what, what to do.
When I met with him earlier, uh, what's today, uh, Wednesday, last week?
Thursday, Wednesday.
Or earlier this week, whenever I ran into him in downstairs, um, he has the, the, I think as of today, he's able to, to differentiate between, um, our flooding and our drainage issues versus the, uh, what Harlingen Water Works does. Okay? Our, obviously, the drainage issues that we have is when houses are getting flooded, when there's too much rain and the water does not go, it, there's too much of that, too much water in a short period of time. The other issue which is, uh, to me is more concerning, is the work that the Harlingen Water Works does. And that boils down to us being able to drink water, bathe, and flush our toilets. Now, the problem that I've, that we've had, or actually my district, probably more so than anybody's, is we have back issues, backwater issues. When it rains too much, there's areas in my district that overflow, that water comes back, and there's been issues like that on the streets. That's why to me, I, I, I'm just baffled as to, I just happened to walk into City Hall at 1:30, 2 o'clock, a couple of days ago, and he was there, and we had a 15, 20-minute conversation, and we were able to solidify a meeting and discuss just project for Water Works. Okay? We need to keep that in mind, all right?
Commissioner, I, I did send out a notice about a month and a half ago, two months ago, um, letting the commission know that they were going to be in town, and if you wanted to have a meeting with them, let me know and I would set it up. Uh, I know the mayor attended that meeting. I don't recall if you've responded to that email?
No, I didn't. I missed that, that email.
Okay, but we've had opportunities for them to meet with the city commission, uh, privately just to talk about your, your issues and concerns. So we've done that, um, and we can do that again, but we need to bring them down again and pick a date. Uh, and we also have, I think we've had, aside from today, we had another meeting with Water Works and yourself, and, uh, I think both lobbyists were there at the time to talk about Water Works issues.
That, that was the first time I met them. And that came, that happened about probably two months ago. After one of the meetings, right before we had our meeting, you informed me that they were going to be in town on Thursday. They were in town because they had a meeting in Brownsville and then they were going to the Port of Harlingen. So they happened to provide us with 90 minutes or so. Okay? My concern is, I've, I've tried, I've reached out to you since you've been on board to try to meet up with these guys and try to make sure that they're well-informed. Okay? That's my concern. All right? We need to be very proactive. Okay? Yes, we have plenty of, of drainage issues. And if we can minimize that, that means our constituents, our taxpayers pay less in insurance funds, in, in insurance, in, uh, flooding insurance. Consequently, their poverty values go up. Consequently, that the, the, the FEMA flood zones are lessened, which means now we're going to have more people trying to build, all right, and be, and, and be productive. We need to have that. I want it to be very proactive when it comes to, to our drainage issues and very proactive in making sure that our Harlingen Water Works gets as much time and as much courtesy and most of all, funds to get their job done. Because the last thing I want is everything to go through the roof and returning to our taxpayers so they can fork out some more money.
Well, I...
I understand where I, I, I need you to make sure we're, we're on the same page here.
No, and, and I, Commissioner, I agree with you. I don't think that our taxpayers should have to fund the improvements. I think we should try to get grants. And, um, from the conversation that we had with William Yarnell today, we talked about exactly that, trying to get grant funds for Water Works to do some of their projects. Uh, so...
What, what was alarming? Okay? Was a short-term need, five-year, 130, uh, 132 million. Okay? And, and I, like, like I said before, this didn't happen overnight. Okay? This, this has been accumulating. It, it keeps on, we've been working, not with the Harlingen Water Works. We need to be, make, be more proactive and never forget what's going on. We all want to take a good shower in the morning or in the evening, and so on down the line. We, we need to keep this, go ahead, I'm...
Yeah, yeah. If, if I may add, prior to the new guys getting elected and Gal, and prior to COVID for you, we would go up every two years when the legislature would meet to Austin, the city folks would, and we would meet with our, um, our representatives up there, and we would meet with these two fellows. And we would hold, uh, conversations with them to help direct them and redirect them and encourage them to do what we asked them to do, and then we would also get back, feedback from them. So, uh, it is an active process. City management is involved and we are involved. The Congress, uh, legislature will be meeting this year, so I suspect we'll be going up for Harlingen Day or Rio Grande Valley Day or Harlingen-Sampanito Day, however it's been labeled before, where we get to, uh, to press the flesh and work the room.
You do realize that a lot of bills have already been submitted as of three weeks ago?
Correct.
So we're basically behind the eight...
And then, no? And then let me tell you, uh, the National League of Cities was beyond fabulous in information. I've already directed the, uh, our city management and our Water Works, there's a, a $600 billion available in the special program for water and sewer. Uh, they're working on that, and, uh, I've directed them to, um, everything from census information and other federal money and programs that we weren't aware of. So, um, we're on this, I'm on it, and our city management is on it.
Thanks, Mike. And I, I'll just chime in on here. I think that, um, listening to this, this, uh, discussion, it, I guess what I, what, what comes to mind for me is that sometimes we don't know, um, what's happening behind the scenes, uh, but work is always being done. Work is being done, and, and Gabe is, is actively working with me, um, regarding our, getting ready for this next session. We have, uh, Commissioner Lopez and, and Kinsley on the legislative committee. We meet often. Um, earlier today, I was running a little late because I met with the Speaker of the House along with others in, in the region to ensure that we have his ear in what's important to Harlingen. Um, Mike and I went to the National League of Cities and, and learned a ton, uh, and I can acknowledge and, and say that, you know, I don't, I don't know everything, but I'm trying every single day to, to learn more, and we learned a ton while we were there and, and, and actively giving that to city management. But we are, we are not behind. We're not behind. We, we know exactly what the needs are for the city, and we're actively working to ensure that we get the most, we get our piece of the pie and not just the, the crumble. So we hear you, um, and, and we are working towards that goal. We want the city of Harlingen to, to know that that's what we're doing. And just because you don't read about it every day or, or see it happening, it is wor, we, these, this is the, the work that we do behind the scenes. And so I'm excited for this next session. We do have our day, we have our RGV day. I will be there to advocate for the city as well as the legislative committee and our partners throughout the region and, of course, throughout the city of Harlingen. So rest assured that we're, we're going to do a good job and we're going to do the best that we can for the city of Harlingen. I think, um, maybe we can clean up this, uh, agreement a tad to include that out that you, that you mentioned from the, I don't see the previous contract, but if there's a way to have a 30-day to, to, you know, for either party to cancel the agreement. My only concern with that is we wouldn't want them canceling in the middle of the legislative session. Uh, but that's something that we can, we can put, uh, for, for city management to, to review and definitely to have that open lines of communication with these consultants. But I do believe that, given that we are, we have been working with them and we need to move forward, any change in, in consultants at this time would be damaging to the city. So I would encourage this commission to, to really consider what's important to our constituency and to allow, um, this agreement to move forward so that way we can, we can get, you know, we can get to business and, and do what we need to do and what we were elected to do for the city of Harlingen.
Mayor?
Yes.
I agree with you. Okay. My thing is, we're over 60 days behind in getting them on the dotted line. That's my concern as, as well. Okay? I had been bringing this up, not whether, I didn't know about the contract because I had not seen one until yesterday. Okay? Once again, on previous contracts that we received yesterday, okay, there's a termination. That's standard procedure if I'm mistaken for mostly, if I'm not on all contracts.
Not necessarily. All contracts are, are going to be different. And, and again, my concern is that I would like to rest assured that there's some, um, level of, of commitment on both sides, the city and the consultants. You know, well, we, the last thing we want is some of them, you know, pulling out of an agreement when we need them.
No, I agree.
So if you have that and, and, and that doesn't, it works both ways. So if you, you put that in, then the consultants can also terminate at any time, and that's probably not the best position that we need to be in. But I think that's something that Mark and...
Mayor, let me, let me suggest something because the, the problem this year is we're having or paying the consultant every month, but he's really going to be doing the bulk of his work in the legislative session.
Right.
So it would be, it would be fundamentally unfair for us to terminate the contract for cause after he's done all the work over the next two, three months and then, and then to cut him loose if he's done all, so, so I, so what I'm going to suggest, Commissioner, is that we have a ter, you, we can approve it subject to a termination-for-cause provision. So if there is cause to terminate him, we can, but it would not allow him to, to leave us hanging in the middle of the legislative session.
And that's why we have lawyers.
We don't have to go that far. Okay? The other two contracts that were in the, that we all received, their contracts were basically set up to where we could either renew them or not during the, during the legislative session. So this one-year contract, and from here on in, we can keep it towards in the middle of the session. In other words, if it's a two-year, they're, I don't know how long they've been with us. Okay? I do realize in the past, they've been through, this would be their, from the contracts, what, three, four different legislative sessions? Okay? We don't want to give them a contract or put ourselves in a situation that the contract expires on, on... that the contract expires on, on, on September thirtieth because they're getting to run. And we supposed to be ahead of the game to where we're providing the information that they need so they can do a heck of a job for us, okay? So it doesn't do us any good to say, oh, we'll have it in on, on September twentieth, uh, September thirtieth, and the legislation, uh, meets every two years and we're months away. So this one-year contract is fine. I just want it to be more proactive and realize what we're doing here. I myself, I mentioned it before, I don't like being put between a hard place and a rock and having to make a decision because we have to wait at the last minute. This is what's happening here, sixty-some-odd days later. This is something that should have been given to us back in, uh, August.
Commissioner, I think it's one of the reasons why we had that meeting with the consultants so that everybody could come in and meet with them when they were here. Because, um, we wanted to make sure that the commissioners were able to speak to them and then felt comfortable with them. That's why we did that. And, uh, we did get some of them to come in and speak with some of the lobbyists. So then, uh, this was the next step to put on the agenda to give them a contract. And keep in mind, this was the first contract that I worked with for the consultants. The others were under previous city managers, so.
I understand.
Okay, I think we're beating a dead horse here already. We understand your concerns, Commissioner, and I think that we need to move forward because we're at seven forty-five already and I know that, um, we have some other things on the agenda. But if you're okay with the one-year contract, I too don't care about what the contracts were before. This is what's before is now. And I think that we should, if, if you're not happy with this agreement, I'm happy to, you know, vote against it. But I do think that we should put this to a vote now so we can move forward on the, uh, on the agenda. But I do acknowledge, I recognize what you say, I appreciate it. And, and I, and I know that Gabe will as well. And we will make sure that we are proactive and we're doing what we need to for the, for the city. And I appreciate you being an advocate for this. Uh, but I do think that we should move forward. So do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Excuse me.
Sorry, you too, Commissioner.
I apologize. Yeah, just want to make one quick amendment to the contract. Uh, paragraph one or subsection one, scope of representation. Uh, second sentence says consultancy will work directly with the mayor, the city manager. And I want to add, commissioners appointed to the COH ad hoc legislative committee. That language right there. I'll send you the language just to include it in there. Otherwise, uh, everything else looks good to go.
I think that's perfect. I, I overlook that, that's good. With that, can we amend your motion?
Yes, amend the motion to include what Daniel Lopez included there.
All right. So all those, and we got the second from Commissioner Morales. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Um, moving on to fourteen, consideration and possible approval of the retail market analysis and recruitment services from the Retail Coach. And Beverly's going to be very brief.
Yes, I even wrote it out. Good evening, uh, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Beverly Loftus, interim CEO for the Harlingen EDC. Uh, for the last two years, we have actually utilized the help of Retail Coach for retail recruitment services. Uh, these services include retail market analysis, retail demand analysis, retail and developer prospects, prospect lists, site profiles for available retail development, and of course retailer, uh, retail recruitment for national retailers, uh, for Harlingen. Over the last few years, the Retail Coach has been instrumental in the recruitment of Jersey Mike's, Party City, Dutch Bros Coffee and others that are ready to enter into the market as soon as we can get them a site. They are currently working on ten other retailers and restaurants that have some level of interest in Harlingen. Typically, retail, retail deals may take anywhere from eighteen to thirty-six months to complete. Uh, this new contract, if approved, will allow us to keep Harlingen up to date from a data retail market analysis standpoint as well as continue to make sure recruitment and follow-up are happening with the retail prospects. Uh, on November twenty-ninth, the Harlingen EDC Board approved a twelve-month agreement with the Retail Coach for thirteen thousand dollars. Uh, today, I'm, I am here to ask the commission to allow the Harlingen EDC to continue engaging services with the Retail Coach for the retail market analysis and recruitment services and approve the thirteen thousand dollar expenditure.
Question. Have you, have you talked with the other firm in this, in this industry?
We have, um.
I forget their name, but there's Retail Coach and this other firm.
Yeah, there are some other retail consultants. They all pretty much do the same thing. Um, but we have already worked with Retail Coach for two years now. And so we wanted to just extend it for another year, uh, see if we can't close some of these additional retailers that they have already built those relationships for.
All right, do we have a motion?
Motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Stay there.
I'll stay here.
Item fifteen, consideration and possible action to approve VITA, the Valley Initiative Advancement Agreement. Beverly?
Thank you again. Um, so in goal one of the Harlingen EDC Tenure Strategic Plan, it includes the investment of human capital through specific workforce development and training activities. Uh, VITA provides grants to underserved citizens for higher education training and workforce development. Uh, the VITA program is designed to provide financial assistance and intensive career counseling to students who are experiencing financial hardships or other challenges that keep them from pursuing workforce training or higher education. In two thousand and twenty-two, VITA served five hundred and thirty-four students with an average persistent rate of ninety-four percent. Uh, the Harlingen EDC Board approved the VITA Assistance Proposal of fifty thousand dollars on November twenty-ninth. The Harlingen EDC is asking for approval for the fifty thousand dollars to support at least ten Harlingen residents through the VITA program.
I'll make the motion. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item sixteen, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three Program of Work.
Hello again. Um, okay, so the Program of Work presented in your packet outlines the vision for the upcoming two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three fiscal year for the Harlingen EDC. Aligned with the Harlingen EDC's strategic plan, the Program of Work is designed to provide the way we work toward meeting those six goals listed in the strategic plan. The Program of Work includes efforts such as working with industry partners and employers to create a more diverse workforce through workforce development and training, using guiding principles to attract, retain, and expand industrial companies to Harlingen, increase awareness of Harlingen to industries in Mexico to promote Harlingen as the location of choice, support transportation efforts such as the expansion of FM five oh nine, the free trade bridge at Los Indios, capacity building at, at the Port of Harlingen, and continued growth of the Valley International Airport. We also want to encourage the growth of retail development around major retail hubs, continue efforts to attract new retail and work toward identifying a long-term emergency loan fund with participation for, from other funding mechanisms, uh, continue working with the UTRGV on the future academic and medical school needs, work on efforts to encourage expansion of healthcare industry, and then finally, to provide an ecosystem that supports, promotes, and encourages growth for small businesses and entrepreneurs. So the Harlingen EDC is asking approval for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three Program of Work as outlined in your packets.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Beverly.
Thank you, have a good night.
Likewise. Item seventeen, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution to appoint a city representative to the Cameron County Appraisal District Board of Directors.
Um, we had this item placed back on the agenda. Um, I had an individual in mind, but, um, there was some discussion that perhaps someone from the commission wanted to serve on this particular board. So, uh, I did not reach out to the individual I had in mind.
Who, who is our current representative?
It is David Albright, if I remember.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, why would you get rid of David Argabright?
Uh, well, I'm not, it's not my choice, it's actually the commission, so.
So why would the commission want to get rid of a guy with tenure?
Because we believe in switching things out and trying new people to give, bring new ideas to the board.
Okay, this idea is not a board of ideas. What they do is oversee the finances of the Cameron County Appraisal District.
I understand.
They don't raise taxes, they don't lower taxes. They just make sure that the money is acquired properly and spent properly.
I just think we need someone different.
No shenanigans. And so who do you have in mind?
I don't know, that's up to the board for us to decide right here.
If I can ask, how long has, uh, Albright, how is he pronounced?
Argabright.
Albright?
Argabright.
How long has he been on the?
Uh, I think he served for two terms already on the board.
He's second in command there.
Vice president, right, or something like that, when I looked it up?
Term was what, three years?
Two years.
What's the term?
I don't know.
Uh, it's a two-year term.
Yeah, it's two, two-year terms.
Yes, so he's been there four years.
I'm a big fan of, of, um, well, obviously, she should know by now, I'm a big fan of term limits.
I'm sorry.
I'm a big fan of, I've never been told that. Um, I'm a big fan of term limits. And I believe that, um, people should only serve for a, a, a lot amount of time. And after that, um, we switch out and get someone, and someone new. And I believe that Mr. Albright has been there already for two terms. He's served four years, according to you. I, I don't know really much about him, but according to you, um, he served, um, you know, well, and I commend him for that and I thank him for his service. Um, but I honestly think that we should be getting somebody else. Whether we choose to get someone here that's on the commission or wherever you, we all collectively decide, um, I, um, but I just think we need someone new.
Why don't we, if I may make the recommendation, why don't we table this? Let's, each of us kind of bring someone that we think would work and then we can discuss it next time. I know it's, December thirty-first is our deadline, correct?
Yes.
But I would like just to hear who everyone's thinking and we proceed forward from there.
We have one more meeting between.
Correct. Yeah. Can move quickly.
And I think I, I did look into it. I think they're, they're not meeting until mid-January, the, the board. Okay, so do we have a, we have a motion to table?
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item eighteen, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading, amending chapter forty-six of the Harlingen City Code Traffic and Vehicles and adding article one, section forty-six point two, no wake on flooded street, providing for a criminal penalty and establishing an affirmative defense. Gabe?
Um, Mayor, Members of the Commission, this came up from, uh, a member of the commission. Commissioner Lopez brought this up to our attention stating that we did not have no wake ordinance in, in Harlingen. Uh, there are some other cities that do. So the city attorney came up with an ordinance that would make it a criminal penalty to actually create, uh, a wake in a street that was at least six inches flooded at its crest. So we are recommending that this be adopted on its first reading. It, it, I, I will say that it may be difficult to enforce, especially during a flood event because we have to see them actually creating the wake or at least have video evidence that they did it. But I think it's something that knowing that it's on the books would actually help prevent, a wake being created and perhaps forcing water into a street or a business. So we're actually recommending approval of the ordinance.
Do you want to comment?
Yeah, this is something that, when I was campaigning and block walking, uh, that people really were wanting and pushing. Unfortunately, I've seen it when we've had random events where people go hot-dogging in their Jeeps or their pickup, large pickup trucks, right? Uh, I'm blessed that I have a retaining wall, but I'm not, my neighbors do not, right? And so the water can be going into their houses. I know when I brought it up, I talked to Ford about it. Ford was actually the one that, uh, told me, I didn't even know that ordinances such as this had existed in other cities and was actually able to get us the research that, uh, Mark was able to look at, at least to, for, to help us draft this. I've been talking to Mark about it, uh, the language in there, the exceptions, all that. One of my concerns originally had been, what if you're going home or you're going to work, right? But we leave that to police officer discretion, uh, as we do in so many cases. I think this is fantastic and I know that it's really wanted by a lot of our citizens, especially in the neighborhoods that there is flooding. I know Ford, you daddy, yourself specifically with this issue.
Absolutely. And I mean, you can drive down the street without causing.
Correct.
But we had the big rain there in two thousand and nineteen. I mean, I just watched the tidal waves come across my yard. Luckily, I, the city and the county, it could be plenty of sandbags. A lot of the neighbors didn't. I think it's, I think it's a good one to have.
Absolutely.
The, the April fifth, nineteen ninety-one flood, my backyard neighbor had his gun out. And I was doing my best to talk him, not into shooting the people driving through the, through the street flooding his house.
I'm glad it worked out for you.
Yeah.
He was the neighbor and the driver, right?
Well, this is wonderful. How do we anticipate, um, educating our community that there will be a criminal, uh, criminal penalty?
Uh, Mayor, after the second reading, we can work with Christina to get something out on social media and, and use those avenues to actually let the public know that there, that there will be a penalty if you create a wake in, in certain situations.
Correct.
Wonderful. I think that's a, a great work and I commend Commissioner Lopez and Kinsley to, and Mark doing the research and bringing this to the community. It sounds like it's what the community wants and, um, I think it's a positive change. Is there any other discussion? Okay, so do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, item nineteen, we have board appointments. Before we, uh, do that, I just want to address the ladies here. On my packet, I have that, that I have a vacancy on the Harlingen Teen and Young Adult Advisory Board. And I made an appointment already, if you can look for, for that in the previous meeting. It was Caitlin Renteria. And, um, I have highlighted here that on the Construction Board of Adjustments, Nestor Martinez, that he's, his term expired, but I've already reappointed him and see when that was done. Um, and, let's see, there's one more. The Golf Course Advisory, uh, Mr. Bettis, I also reappointed him at a previous meeting, if you can look for that date and, and ensure that that is, um, accurate. I think that's, that's all I have.
I had a question, um, are, because I know after COVID, a lot of these boards kind of went dormant. Are these boards, like, the one I'm, I'm asking about is the Keep Har, and I know Ford was involved in, you were involved in the Keep Harlingen Beautiful Board, right?
I was, yes, sir.
So has that been brought back up as far as you know?
No, and I, I mean, there's, well, there's too many vacancies.
Well, I spoke with the chair, Nick Consiglio, and he did express to me that they wanted to continue with the board. Um, I asked him to reach out to, you know, see where they're at, um, maybe you can.
I spoke with him and he said he didn't get much in the way of response, but.
There's money, I think they still have.
If you have a vacancy, I mean, you need to fill it because we're, we're wasting a lot of manpower with TSTC students and MMA students and so on. Could be out knocking out some projects and there's nobody getting them out there, I mean.
I agree. So, um, maybe we can reach out to that, to, if, if city management can reach out to, to Nick and, and see what he's going to do, what response he got. I did ask him to give us an updated list of, of members that want to be on that board. Um, there's money in, in that board, so we need, there, we do need to, to resolve this issue one way or another. Um, having said that, is there anybody that has board appointments? We'll start with Commissioner.
The, uh, the vacancy for Animal Shelter Board, I, I filled, Jody Stryker. Uh, the vacancy you showed for Harlen, Healthy Harlingen, Mr. McCullough, I reappointed. And I guess I got to find a engineer alternate for Construction Board of Adjustments.
I think McCullough might not want, you might want to talk to him. I don't know that he, he wants.
No, we're.
I mean, I'd like him to, but.
We're, we're.
All right, sounds good.
Um, no, not right now.
Okay. You're good. Commissioner Morales, reading?
Uh, no, just, I just want to stress again, if everyone can get, um, their pick for the Teen Advisory Board, because I have, I have some students that are like kind of eager to get started. Um, but we need to be, have enough in order to reach a quorum so that way they can get started.
If you have a kid or student that's in District Two, just tell them in all points.
Okay.
And whoever has their needs and appointment on the Golf Course Advisory Board, if you don't have someone, please let me know and we can fill that position. That's all we have, okay? Do we have a, so we, do we have a motion?
Hold on, one second. Hold on, one second. No, we're good.
You're good. Do we have a motion for Ford's appointment?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries, all right. Executive Session, we, item twenty, consultation with legal counsel pursuant to Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one to consult with city attorney regarding legal issues and to receive privileged attorney-client combinations pursuant to the Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one-two. Tennis courts deliberation pursuant, uh, B, deliberation pursuant to Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two to deliberate the exchange lease or value of real property for the deliberation in an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the position of the government body in negotiations with a third-party, real estate with county. Uh, do we have a motion to go into Executive Session?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, okay, um-
Just to put it on the record, I'll be upstanding from twenty-B, as such, I'll ask for the professional courtesy of y'all taking that one up first, I'll stay out here, and then you guys call me in whenever you're ready to talk about A.
Sounds good. Okay, um, the time is now eight oh four, ladies and gentlemen, we are moving into Executive Session, and we will be out, uh, shortly.
There's another chip.
All right. The time is now eight thirty-five, and we are back, um, from Executive Session, and we do not have any action items, and so thank you for your patience, and this meeting is adjourned.